Call the roll.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Steins.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elsa Beck. Williamson.
Here.
Engstrom.
Here.
Day number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
Uh, no changes this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Day number three, presentation of petitions, other communications. A presentation about lights on after school and YSS Kids Club Program. Tori, you're up.
I was like, where should we stand? So I'm Tori with the YSS Soon Kids Club Program. Um, I am one of our kids club coordinator and this is actually Cody who today was her first day as the YSS supervisor. I'm going to come in on the city council meeting on her very first. So, um, we welcome Cody, so she will be taking over our boom site. Um, some of you might be aware of our program. Um, but October, we celebrate lights on, which is a national celebration of after school programs, um, all over. So we decided to come to council meeting, um, this month just to kind of help raise awareness of our program and what we do after school. So we are, um, a YSS program in partnership with the Boom Community School District. So we offer before and after school care. We did move to the New Ledges Elementary School, um, this year. So that was an exciting move for us. So we're happy to be in that space. Um, but just a little bit about our program. So we offer before school and after school care. So we do open at six thirty in the morning for those parents that have to be to work early. So we offer care from six thirty till about eight. We put kids on buses to go to Franklin and the Middle School. And then we get them after school, um, early out days. We run program early, regular days where they're after school. Um, we also run all day program. So six thirty in the morning to six at night on scheduled, no school days, um, spring break, winter break, that kind of thing where they're taking care of all of the kids. Um, we provide care for children that are kindergarten through sixth grade. So we do have a wide, um, age variety at our program. Um, and then during the summer, we typically run two separate programs. We run all day, kind of like a summer camp for, um, families. Child care. So, um, the mission of our kids sub program is just to provide a safe and nurturing environment in which the kids can continue to learn and grow. We very much, I was telling you, we're very much a social setting. So we work on a lot of social emotional problem solving and that kind of things with the kids. So, um, just kind of looking, raising some awareness. Cody handed out a couple of packets for you guys. So it just tells a little bit about the importance of after school programs. Um, we love having the kids in our care instead of just being at home on their tablets, on their iPad, running around town causing mischief. So we're happy to provide care for those families that are working and aren't able to be there after school. So, um, we do partner with a number of different, um, places around the community and things. Right now we partner with America Reads, America Counts, um, which is an Iowa State program, but they send tutors out to our site. So we do have a tutor that is with us two days a week. So if parents want their kids to extra work on math, so they're reading that kind of things. We do have tutors available for them to work on those things with them as well. So, um, during the summertime, we do a lot more, get out into the community. Um, we were actually talking, Cody and I, about doing some kind of a service learning project in the past. We talked with the Humane Society. Um, a lot of the nursing homes, when we send them cards or go to visit them during the summertime. So we really tried to just raise the awareness of our program in the community. Um, so yeah, um, there is a personal handmade invitation from our kiddos on the back. So we are hosting, um, in celebration of lights on, we actually host an open house. So on October twenty fifth, um, from five thirty to seven, the kids play activities. We serve dinner. They help plan some games. We have a little raffle that we do. So again, just kind of raising awareness of our programs in the community. Everybody is welcome to attend that. Um, so it should be fun. They decided we voted on a Halloween theme. So they have some Halloween food that we're doing, some different activities and things like that. So, um, in the back of your packet, there's yes, a very nicely colored or handwritten invitation from such. So, um, that's kind of the gist of it. Uh, if you guys ever have any questions or anything and visitor volunteers on our program, um, any suggestion for service learning projects or anything that we can do with the kids to help the community, like we're more than happy to. We normally have around thirty to thirty-five, um, kids on a general day after school. We have about fifty-six in our enrollment and that includes kids that only come before to care. And then we do actually have a, um, drop-in option as well. So parents where it's like, oh, I had a meeting late or something, then they can let us know about twenty-four to forty-eight hours if they're in need of care that day. And then they can just drop into our program as well. So, okay, any questions or anything? No?
Thank you. Very good program.
Thank you.
Good job.
Pretty much.
Hey, be public hearing for the consideration of the sale of a portion of the public right of way in the north south alley between the seven hundred block of twelfth street and the seven hundred block of eleventh street. Any written comments?
No.
Public comments? That's all we can, we need to do the resolution.
Yes.
Resolution thirty-one thirty-seven, resolution authorizing the vacation and convenience of a public right of way in the north south alley between the seven hundred block, twelfth street and the center block of eleventh street, Boone, Iowa.
So moved.
Second. All the roll.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Number four, report outstanding committees, public administration, Linda.
No report tonight.
Okay, public safety and transportation, David.
Just two quick things, your honor. The first one is a request to place signs on the right of way for the airport fundraiser. This is the chili feed. It's coming up this Saturday. Uh, it happened last year. We did the same thing with the signs, so we just need a, a motion to approve that.
Yes.
Second.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
And then the second thing is, um, starting in October, we'd like to move the public safety meetings to Wednesday, um, due to some availability of some of the members rather than on Tuesday. Thirty, so it's kind of an informational thing, I think.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I got, your honor.
Uh, next up, utility committee.
Uh, no report, your honor.
Economic Development Committee, Terry.
Um, just a couple of things. We have two outstanding BDF grants, um, both downtown, one at the H and R block building and one at Hans and BAME Insurance. Uh, I talked to Hans, ran into him in the supermarket and he said that that should be done into this week. And it's a lot less than what they anticipated. So that's good news for us too. Um, and the one at H and R block is very near, at least two, if you happen to go by there, they look really nice. So, uh, that section of the, that block is looking really nice. So, um, second thing is the Tin Pig Restaurant over here. Uh, Virginia Theater Building across the street, um, received their hundred thousand dollar catalyst grant. Um, thanks to the efforts of AMZ DC and Brenda and our staff, they got that done.
Just a little bit of an update on what's going on over there.
Well, you know, uh, this was an important piece of the puzzle. They can proceed with their plans to repair the roof. I, is there not, I think it was something on the agenda.
There's a resolution.
Yeah, there's a resolution.
So yeah, so now this was a, an important piece. We'll continue to see work over there specifically on the roof.
Great.
That emergency catalyst is directed.
Nice, thank you.
Thanks for getting that done. That's all I have, your honor.
Okay, so we need to do the resolution. Thirty-one thirty-eight, resolution authorizing the execution of a community credit building, uh, mediation grant agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority and Boone, Virginia Theater Building, nine twenty-six, eighth street, Boone, Iowa.
Still moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yeah.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay, department reports, official Dave AIDS.
I have no formal report, your honor, but I just wanted to update council. The next council meeting, I will be bringing a review of our zoning ordinances for some changes. Um, we do plan on getting that out to you guys prior to the meeting so you can review it and have a quick.
Thank you.
Uh, by hands officer Andrea.
No report.
City attorney Jim.
No report, your honor.
Director of Public Works Wayland.
Thank you, your honor. Came tonight to update you guys on our annual sanitary sewer lining project. Uh, staff and I have identified three areas we would like to pursue. The first area would be an extension of last year's pro, uh, program from Woodland Avenue up to Stories, Union Street on Story. Um, the second project of that would be from First Street to Mamie on Story. And we've chosen those two because of some issues we've had and the cost of traffic control, safety of my crew and my staff, uh, lane, lane closures and stuff like that. Uh, my third area I've found is we wanted to move a little bit of this project to West Boone. So, uh, West Seventh Street from Division to McPherson Street. It's fairly deep sewer and it's directly beneath a water main, um, making that an ideal candidate in my books so that we don't have to mess with the water main and, and get, and fall with any of that. So without any opposition, I will probably move forward on getting bid and retaining that. Secondly, um, I know you guys know you purchased a camera. I thank you for the camera. Uh, these are some pictures including packets. Last week, we had a hole on forty-three between first and second. Guys, hear, hear me talk about manholes and stuff before. I don't know how familiar you guys are with lamp holes. Manholes are five foot square, a footing below and they, they carry more weight and surface area. A lamp hole is a pipe size E and all the way to the pipe, stick up to the, to the street, traffic weighing on that. It's just a size on size pipe and that shears pipe and it goes in. Picture number one is what we found in the one hundred block of Story Street. That is a excellent picture from the camera that we just personally showing this vertical pipe that is crushed down into our sanitary sewer and that's blocking the flow. So we went in and made that repair and this camera got us within three feet of it. So we don't have to have a usual open.
But that's, you, that's been on your radar for some time, hasn't it?
Uh, not that.
Not that. Okay. It was one that was near it.
One, one, we did that one. We done three along there. So now that all the lamp holes are fixed, we're going to get the lining done. Got you. Get through with it.
But this allowed you to do it much.
Yeah.
Quickly.
Right. Quick. I was in and out. Uh, staff started at seven thirty in the morning. We had it worn back by one thirty and I had it down to two lanes each direction by three thirty and we opened it the next morning. Nice and smooth. Section, picture number two would be in the Woodland Avenue section of Story Street there. Um, that is something that we see and right now is ideally the time to get that lined. Uh, the aisles around there, we're still around. As long as they can shoot their liner through there, we can, we can put a new pipe inside there. It looked pretty bad from the cameras, from your pictures, stuff like that, but that's what we see. Picture number three, and it's a little hard to see, but if you look at the hole off to the left, an example of a homeowner that has an issue and they come to us saying they have sanitary sewer problems. You've got a problem. You've got a problem.
Right.
We put the camera down the main. We drive down the main and we see that our main is completely intact, right at their service line. Their service has fallen away from ours. This is a great example of what we use this camera for, to know if we have to move forward on.
Thank you.
Nice. Good, ninja turtle. Public Safety, Chief Adams.
Yes, your honor. Uh, the Boone Fire Department is its third year of the Boone Edge Program and, um, where we have, uh, students come in, do ride longs. Uh, last year was our first year that we were able to host an EMT class in the high school, started, uh, with eleven students and it was pretty successful. Uh, from that has grown a apprenticeship with the Iowa Workforce Development and EMT apprenticeship, which is the first in the state. Um, with that, um, which helps us, uh, and it talks about in the resolution, it helps cover some wages for the, the apprenticeship. It, it helps us cover, uh, personal protective equipment, training items, those kinds of things. Um, one of the things that I like to, how people ask me, well, what does this do? And, and I refer back to actually the, the police department's program of you go through the training and then you go on field training officer to get really a lot of experience. And that's what, um, this apprenticeship does is we'll take somebody that's been through the EMT training and then we'll put them through basically their school year. Uh, they'll come up during their school year, um, two hours a day, three hours a day, depending on how the, the schedule lays out and they'll do their FTO during that time. Um, and then that way, when they are ready to go, they can either join our department as a paid-on call firefighter, a part-time firefighter, or they may be going off to college and doing something else. Uh, but it's really a, a tool that we are trying to use as a recruitment option, uh, as we see recruitment efforts, uh, struggling across the United States and going into the public safety realm. So with that, tonight, uh, with your approval, I have Hannah Deary, who has been selected as our first, um, apprentice for the EMT program. And Hannah, you wanted to say who you are, uh, your age and, uh, what your future looks like.
Um, my name's Hannah Berry. I'm seventeen. I'm turning eighteen later this month. Uh, so then I will be registered with the state to be able to, uh, work with patients and everything like that. Um, I was hoping to maybe go in on call for, for high school or maybe into fire science. I haven't decided yet, but that, trying to figure this out.
So what we do is coming up actually later this month is we will have career exploration days at the high school where we'll take a lot of our equipment, take it off the truck, take it into the high school. Hannah got to do this last year as part of it. They get to use everything from our jaws of life, um, our innovation heads, our IV arms, and they get to basically do, we get to teach them all the skills that we do right there in the, in the, um, library and just let all the students be able to touch and just kind of get introduced. From there, um, they go through and they'll sign up for ride alongs with us. So last year we probably did about twenty-five ride alongs, got eleven students out of there. I think this year so far, we're at about forty ride alongs. Um, so we hope to see that program to continue. And so with that, um, I'm hoping for an approval tonight of this resolution. So we can bring Hannah on as our first apprentice.
I, so moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Any questions I can answer about that program?
Did you say this is a really innovative program that you're one of the first to do?
The first in the state to create this, uh, EMT apprenticeship. Yep.
Very good.
Workforce development. So. Yep.
Good. Sounds pretty great programs.
I already have chiefs, uh, starting to see this and call and asking how the EMT program is not new in the schools. It's about on its third year, but this apprenticeship, uh, idea is, is brand new. So.
Very good. No pressure there, huh? You're the first.
Yeah.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Uh, my last quick thing is, uh, yesterday, uh, we had a very successful training opportunity, um, of the old Pizza Hut building. And just, uh, as an example, um, with that building, we were able to get two hundred and fifty-three hours of training out of that building for the multiple times we were able to go down there, get things done, including yesterday. So it was really a great thing, uh, that we were able to have because obviously structures like that, to sit not close to any other buildings, uh, make it a nice thing for us and, uh, to be able to, to do some training in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Revo. No report, your honor. Okay, city administrator Bill.
Thank you. So the only thing I have is what was on the agenda last week. Uh, Councilman Mormon brought forward something. You guys are going to look at that over the last few weeks and there's going to be a discussion amongst you all tonight. That's why I sent him my report.
Yeah.
I have, uh, the downtown tree assessment that I handed out, uh, two weeks ago.
Right.
And then I bring, was this, this was yours, right? You handed out on the downtown sidewalk program. So if you want to move forward with this, staff is looking for some direction on how you want to do it. You can discuss it. Uh, we can bring it back again if you're not ready to make a decision or staff can work on it and hone it up a little bit if you so desire and bring it back. So we're, uh, looking for some direction. Or if you want to even move forward at all.
Yeah. I mean, you, did you have any recommendations based on the proposal? You said staff work on it a little bit. Do there anything?
Staff worked on the tree assessment that is, and this is what, uh, Councilwoman put out. So now we're waiting for the discussion on council, uh, to direct us on if you want us to do anything.
I'd like to discuss it. I mean.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Out here. And, and when I looked over the report on kind of the condition of the downtown, um, was kind of interested in, and I, I didn't do the actual math on it, but probably a third or half of them were really just cited that they needed pruning. I mean, that the trees, the conditions of the trees were okay, but we just need to kind of keep on that and, and have them pruned so that they're in better condition. Um, and it really, at the end of the report, it said there were just two trees that really did need to be removed at this time. So that also is a really good. Um, most of them are in pretty good shape and can remain. So we added the twenty-nine new trees and these are all looking pretty good. Maybe the two that do need to be removed and it sounds like that, I don't know if they've already done that, but that was going to move ahead. Um, so I thought it was good results, good reports.
What do you want to do about the sidewalks?
Well.
Yeah.
I guess it's kind of a two-pronged.
Yeah, that's the next question.
You want to fix the sidewalks and the trees that are currently there are heaved them. And the root are up and it doesn't, you know, there's an issue with laying new concrete. Or that tree is still there. So the question would be on each one is, is do you want to remove that tree because of the damage it's caused the sidewalk? And then replace that sidewalk.
And I think we need to know, or I, I guess I would need to know how many trees are actually the brief, the, the, uh, cause of the sidewalk being a problem. I mean, so.
But I think we saw Cory, didn't we see like four areas that?
It'd be four.
Like the trees heaved.
From Wayland.
Yep, I, uh, I walked around with Mike and did, well, while he did his tree survey on that and we both came to conclude and I pretty much concur with what he has to say there about the trees. There was probably three, four of them that really were evident that the tree caused the damage. Now you guys all, everybody that was involved up there in the tree planting know about the cinders and the back fill underneath those tree spots, what you were running into. And that's what there is for fill, whether it moves and, and sinks and goes up and down. There's a lot, a lot of different variables here. So we, we took into account that we couldn't put everything on the trees, but there was at least four.
But it seems like this would be the time to probably remove those and repair the sidewalk, um, while we're fixing up the downtown and.
Mike and I did discuss that, that it, you guys wanted to move forward with some partial replacements, some partial areas. We could take that root out and hopefully the tree protects itself, um, you know, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't, if we are going to take the concrete out, we'd probably make an effort to keep sidewalk movement happening again.
And removing the tree?
The root that was causing.
Okay. But maybe not the tree. Cause otherwise we could remove the tree and put the small, you know, one that shouldn't do that damage.
I think it's so broad. It needs to be a case by case scenario, probably.
Until you get into it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you've identified four trees besides the two, Wayland.
I think one of them was already.
Four.
One of them was already gone.
How many total trees do you have downtown that because of the tree has caused the concrete to heave and would need work?
Seven oh two story was one. The tree is gone. Um, that concrete definitely, I would say, um, and I think there was two more in the middle.
The corner of the eighths and story where the green spaces, that's pretty bad.
Yep.
Where that big tree is.
Okay. So we could start with seven oh two, the other two and plus eighth and story, and then that these two down here that.
And then the last one was the north, your northwest corner of eighth and story, the Enslie corner there. That Mike thought that, that tree was probably at its, it was starting to get dead, loose branches and it shades the intersection and it creates a slick spot in the winter, um, there right at the traffic light. We thought that.
They're all downtown with businesses.
Yep.
Now, that would be independent of the sidewalk, right? That's true.
That's a tree issue itself, but the sidewalk is, it also is a little bit of that, but.
The decision has to be made how we're going to address that.
Yeah.
As if financially, is the city going to bear the full responsibility or is business going to be partially involved with this? Um, um, my proposal was that if the, if it was trees that were planted that caused it, the city has some responsibility in that because these businesses are two or three removed from the original businesses that were there when they planted these. So.
And that was thirty years.
Proposal was about what, how the numbers match up. Do we pay twenty-five percent? Do we pay thirty percent? What, what are the percentages that we pay up to the max of how much? Because what we're going to have to do is put this program in place and then find and budget for it during budgeting.
Right.
But I think, yeah, you're.
Next fiscal year.
Right.
So I, I would say we can, and the overall condition of the sidewalks is something that the downtown business owners as a whole have been concerned about and responsibility and things like that. So moving forward with the twenty-five, extending the twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Uh, for.
Residential to.
From residential to commercial.
Right.
I think that to me is a no-brainer. Um, I'd like to commit to that and budget for it. Um, Jim, I have a question for you. Who, if a residential street tree heaves a sidewalk, whose responsibility is it for replacing the sidewalk?
Res- residential tree in the right of way.
Yes.
I, I think still the landlord's responsibility for.
The landlord. I just want to make sure that was, so we're in a similar situation where on paper it'd be the property owner's responsibility. Who owns the sidewalk, uh, in front of each of the properties? Is it the same situation as, uh, residential or is there?
Yes.
Downtown.
Yes, well, for it, I don't. It's on their property. So I would assume they own it.
I didn't know how far out the, the property.
Wherever the right of way is.
Okay.
Probably that stops at the sidewalk.
Somewhere in the middle of the sidewalk. Right there.
I don't, yeah, I don't know that, but like it stops right before the side, right where the sidewalk starts.
Right.
Like the curb.
If it, if it's approximately one foot inside the sidewalk area, they can vary.
Away from the business.
Up, uptown.
Away from.
Away from store. Away from the street. Okay.
Perfect. Okay.
Uptown generally the property line is better. Brockface the.
Downtown, we're talking about zero law lines, which is a little bit like the residential.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to suss all of these things out to understand legal liability and things like that.
I think Terry could, you pull this together?
Yeah. I mean, I think, uh, I guess I feel it would be, uh, good to support doing this rather than putting it all on the, the retail owner, the, the store owner.
Yeah. Yeah. And you know, this, that's what I'm trying to get to the exact, you know, who owns what and who's responsible for what angle of this and which is very unclear. Um, but I do agree that, you know, a fifty percent, um, a fifty percent match like is in your proposal would be reasonable.
If, if trees.
If a tree.
If the tree were causing a problem.
The tree.
And I had up to a maximum of three thousand dollars, which should be.
Generally, you're looking at.
Yeah, should take care of it.
A square rectangular area.
Right.
Right.
I think it's a step in the right direction.
I like it.
So, do we just need, have to refine this a little bit with Jim and come back with a, a program that we can agree on and vote on?
Right, yeah. And I think we can put it into our goal setting for next year to try to come up with some money to, you know, more of a grant situation to pay for the ones that, that the city had planted the trees and ruined the tree or ruined the sidewalk.
Yeah, I think there'd be separate application or proportion of the application.
Yeah.
So, or an addendum to it.
Yes.
You want to do that? The staff would do that?
Yeah, we can add to that, the sidewalk policy.
Yes.
Reverse up to fifty sidewalk. Council, have any comment about the cost to remove the tree if that's necessary and or the roots? And the stump.
I mean.
You want to make that as part of the project?
For that disease, disease and design, dying, we, we take care of that. We take those out as a city.
Yeah, doesn't parks do that?
Yeah.
Parks can take the trees out. They don't have the equipment to do.
Do the stuffs. Right.
So that would, that would be an additional cost.
That'd have to be something we think the city would have to do, wouldn't they?
Yes.
You want, so you want the city to bear the brunt of the cost of removing the stubs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll bring something back to you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're not, sir.
Number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you would like to move and discuss separately?
The move.
Second. Call the roll.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay, number seven, Oregon's, it's third reading, Oregon's twenty-two ninety-eight to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the food truck requirements, chapter one thirty-three. Second.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. Call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Steins.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
And I'm right, Mayor Thomas, just, uh, on just that I.
And a great mayor, Thomas, just, uh, on Jess that I stopped out three times, probably watched, uh. That was pretty amazing. Watch, so good training, good. Took a while. Which I know you were training, but.
Yeah, we didn't get it, we didn't get started as early as we wanted to with.
It's only been engulfed at eleven-ten, so.
I know.
No, good job.
Uh, number nine, council member comments.
A couple of items here, uh, first of all, the last fights on the green is this Friday. Um, so invite all of you to come out and stop by. We're, we're having carbo rides for the kids and. Pumpkin hunt and all kinds of stuff for the kids, and then, uh, we have four food trucks that are gonna be there too. So, uh, should be a pretty good time. Um, I put on your desk. Correspondence that I received from the Federal Railroad Administration. I sent emails to all of you that show that, that trail that I have with Senator Ernst. And I, I would hope that you would share this information with your constituents. Um, because there's a lot of stuff going around out there that we're not doing anything, and I have been working on this since April. Trying to get them to respond. If you read the response, it's kind of a canned response. It's not, it's pretty much what I expected, but if you read my reply to that response. Hopefully we'll get Senator Ernst's attention again and we'll get something done. But I have been working on this, like I said, since April. It's not that we're not doing anything, it's just that the Federal Railroad Administration. Railroad lobby in Washington's very powerful. And he told me that going in that with, this would be an uphill battle for us. The third thing that I'd like to bring up is I know the mayor suggested this, and I think we really ought to give this some consideration, is posting larger signs. With the call numbers and the website and the web portal so that people can make those calls. The, the gentleman from the Federal Railroad Association told me, or administration, sorry. Told me that they respond more to. Residential complaints than they do to city complaints, so we need to get our residents on board and we need to make that information. So if they're sitting there waiting for a train, they might as well be dialing that number. So, right? And filing those complaints, because they, if you.
You have to be the first car sitting there to read the slide.
Haven't you talked about that before? The DOT says no-go.
That's all right.
I do. Once everyone's done, I do.
Okay.
So anyway, uh, I think we need to explore that possibility because we need to get those calls, that call up. If you read that response, they said that the call, the complaints had dropped dramatically. That's because people are tired of trying to navigate that web portal, trying to navigate through the call system. The mayor's done that a couple of times.
Something else.
So they're getting frustrated, but we need to keep hammering them.
Now you're just.
If we want anything to get done, so.
I think you did a nice job and, and it is persistence. Um, and you brought up the Viaduct that, you know, really is an eyesore, and we know they've looked at it, but it really should be.
It, it, they keep saying how it's structurally sound and I get that, but it looks like.
Yeah, well.
Right, it, it looks like it's going to fall down, even.
Right.
It is so.
It's, and it's their property, you know, they should take some pride in it and they can do a lot of nice stuff with that area, planting some pollinator gardens or something like that. It's not gonna get overgrown and things, but.
But if anybody, if anybody says something to you, just please tell them that we're working on it.
Mm-hmm. I, I, well, we were talking before the meeting about the possibility of looping in all of our federal representatives on a single letter. Asking them to take action with this, both the senators and the representative. Get a letter on their desk.
Yeah. I know Grassley's aware of it.
It doesn't hurt, I mean, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so.
Issues. There.
And so if we can have them pushing as well.
Yeah.
I get past the aides.
I, I had the railroad here.
But if we can get them going past the aides, you know, and get it on their desks.
So, anyway. What I, yeah, that's all I have, your honor.